All right, good evening. We are going to start our Monday, January 16th open session. This is our Board of Education work session. Going to introduce the folks here on the dais. We have Caleb Snell, our Teacher of the Year. We have Catherine Moore, Board Member. We have Board Member Sam Treadaway, our Superintendent Dr. Kapicki, myself, Rob Walter, who's the Chair, Greg Mills is our Vice Chair, Pamela Escobar and Melanie Friedman, Board Members. We have our Board Attorney, William Eisenhower, and our Board Clerk, Lori Fer. And our SRO is in the room. There's Lori Elliott. Thank you for being here as well. So with the introductions, I do unfortunately have some students that have passed away in this past month, so I would like to read this real quick and have a moment of silence. So at this time, we'd like to take a moment of silence to remember Carson Cummings, a student at Mount Pleasant Middle School, and Anna Karen Bernal Espinosa, a student at Concord High School, who have passed away. We continue to support the families' needs and requests and their request for privacy at this very tragic time of loss and grieving. So let's please take a moment of silence with me. Pray for those families in this difficult time as well. So we will start, we've now backed back in our open session with an opening ceremony. With the introductions, we're going to do our Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand with me with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we need to adopt our agenda, and since our closed session, we didn't get everything accomplished that we were hoping to in the 30 minutes that we were in there, we'll need another closed session at the end of this meeting. So I would need a motion to adopt the Board Agenda with the addition of a closed session at the end of the meeting. So we have a motion by Mr. Treadaway.
Second.
Second. Pam, any further discussion on the agenda? I've told that that's no longer necessary. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No? Okay, we have set our agenda, and we'll move on to Board Chair and Superintendent's comments. And I'll try to keep mine pretty quick. Really, on behalf of the Board, I'd like to thank the applicants that have responded and submitted a resume and a cover letter, sharing their experience, their knowledge, their skills, and interest in our Board vacancy. The applicant pool was very strong, a lot of different variety of experiences, and each individual, we think, can add value to the Board, but only one ultimately can be seated. Later this evening, we're going to narrow that pool of applicants to a few finalists who will have an opportunity to speak to us from the podium, and for the members of the public to come and speak to us as well on behalf of any of those finalists before we vote on the individual to fill that seat. Secondly, this is a Board Member Appreciation Month, so having done this job for about 12 years now, could say that sometimes it's a thankless job, but it's also rewarding to see our students grow and thrive, especially when they receive those diplomas at the graduation. It truly makes it a worthwhile experience and rewarding service commitments. But, you know, Board Members spend a long hours, have to make difficult decisions, establish policies, and keep our attention focused on positive outcomes for all of our students. And it is hard work. The Board actually gives a community a voice in education decision-making, serving really as a link between the community and the classroom. And I'd just like to say to my fellow Board Members that your dedication and commitment are appreciated, and it's an honor to work and serve alongside you. So with that, I will move over to our Superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Mr. Walter, and Happy New Year to everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone back and hope you are refreshed and energized after a well-deserved winter break that was spent hopefully with a lot of family and friends and loved ones. As we step into the new year, I'm excited about the opportunities that 2025 holds for our district and the incredible potential within each of our students and staff members. This semester, we remain committed to creating a culture of excellence where every student feels supported, challenged, and inspired to achieve. Together as educators, parents, and community members, we will continue to nurture an environment where innovation thrives, collaboration strengthens us, and every voice matters. I encourage all of you to stay engaged, whether it's by attending a school event, a school board meeting, or staying connected through Parents Square and social media, or joining us in our ongoing efforts to ensure success for all students. Your partnership is vital to our mission, and we are deeply grateful for your dedication. I'd also like to echo Mr. Walter's comments in terms of Board Appreciation Month that is this month, and thank the Board for their service. I will echo also what he said, that there are long hours that our Board puts in, good or bad, that the community sees the meeting that takes place, but what you don't see is a lot of the work and the partnership and the collaboration that goes on behind the scenes with the administration, the teachers, and the students. I can tell you that our Board is student-focused and wants the best for all students. And the encouraging thing as your Superintendent is when I do talk with Board Members, we are always talking about the betterment of students, and how do we make the school system better, and how do we help serve our kids better. I can tell you that's refreshing. They are very student-focused, and they're keying in on the right things. So I thank you for your service. I appreciate your dedication. And again, congratulations and enjoy Board Appreciation Month. The gifts are later. Our K.A. Curriculum Survey is taking place. Our CNI team is working to make the English Language Arts Curriculum in Cabarrus County Schools stronger. Our goal is to give every student access to great resources and a consistent learning experience. You can check out the curriculum options on our Curriculum Review webpage at www.cabarrus.k12.nc.us/curriculumreview. If you go to the website, you can find the information for the curriculum review process. We do encourage you to vote. We want to make sure that we hear from our community on this choice, that our Board is going to have to make a decision on over the next few months. And I want to thank our teachers. Our teachers have participated in the survey. Ninety-eight percent of our teachers in the district participate in the survey, which is, it just speaks again to the partnership and the involvement that our teachers take place here in Cabarrus County, and their support on this important initiative is very important. So their voice is being well-stated and represented, and we appreciate that from them. Weather notifications, again, I would ask you to check the website for any weather notifications. If poor weather should hit us, or there's any problem with weather, just go to the website and look at the weather site there, and they'll tell you how we're going to communicate with you. I would ask that all of our parents make sure that the contact details in Power School are accurate, so that we do put out announcements that we're connecting to the right people, and they are well-informed, and that your information is updated, so we don't miss anyone. So please take the time to make sure that your information is accurate in Power School. Again, a reminder that on January 20th, it's Martin Luther King Day. We will have no school that day, which is a week, two weeks from tonight. So again, reminding you, we will be off on January 20th. And just real quick before I close, I would ask Dr. Bowers to please come to the podium. We are currently in the process of initiating the Clean Classrooms for Carolina Kids Program, which, in a nutshell, we are testing all of our water areas that discharge water for lead. And I'm happy to tell you that by and large, I'd say 98% to 99% of our test results have come back in a positive fashion, meaning that there is no lead. However, we did find a few spots where there was some lead, so Dr. Bowers is going to tell our community how we're going to inform you of that and what we've done thus far. Dr. Bowers?
Thank you, Dr. Kapicki. And first of all, let me say good evening, members of the Board. And once again, on behalf of myself and others, thank you for all that you do. And Board of Education Appreciation Month, we understand the hours that you put in, and we know your efforts are certainly there to be able to serve the students of Cabarrus County. And you guys put in a lot of hard work behind the scenes, and we're cognizant of that, and we appreciate it with that. So thank you for your service. As Dr. Kapicki just shared, Cabarrus County Schools is currently participating in the Clean Classrooms for Carolina Kids Program. If you're not familiar with this program, this program was really a funding element. They came available from the state of North Carolina, and it came partly due to the fact that the American Rescue Plan Act made funds available for states to be able to put measures in place to sample water in public schools throughout their particular regions, units, et cetera. So the state of North Carolina, two years ago, allotted about $150 million for this effort. It was approved under former Governor Cooper, and then it was actually budgeted into the state's legislative budget allotment. So funds will be available up until November 30th of 2026 for schools to actually participate in these sampling measures. Now, participation is not voluntarily, so I want to make sure that I'm clear with that. It is a legislative mandate that all schools and all school systems participate. However, we do have a little bit of a timeline to which we can actually determine which this operates under. You happen to know that the enrollment for this particular program began last fall, and we have since then enrolled all schools in Cabarrus County Schools in the program, so that we can actually successfully implement the testing at each of the sites. And the testing is designed specifically to be able to look for traces of lead that would occur within any water source in which students would drink, or any water source that would be used for cooking or food preparation within the school itself. So we are just over halfway through all of our schools right now, up to this point, and we have sampled over 600 individual sites at schools. So again, that's just a testament to the work that our facilities team's doing. Our Director of Facilities Maintenance, Mr. Chuck Taylor, in conjunction with our Director of Risk Management, Mr. Jeffrey Mitchell, have really been points on this, and they've done a yeoman's job on keeping us out front, and really keeping us current, and really collecting these samples. When the samples are collected from the individual sites, be it a faucet, or be it another water distribution point, we then send those samples to the state. The state will then test the sample to determine whether or not there are allowable, excuse me, any lead traces available in the water itself. If a sample comes back and it's 10 parts per billion or greater, then that particular faucet and/or water sample site is to be taken out of service. So as I shared earlier, with over 600 points of contact we've sampled thus far, we have had three schools with points that came back above the state allowable level. Those schools were Coltrane Web, which happened earlier this year. It was back in August, September, as we were transitioning into the school. We just recently had results back from some of our other schools, Weddington Hills Elementary School, and then Odell Elementary School. Those have been the three thus far. And the samples we're collecting back, when I say that they had some points in which we've actually had allowed lead levels above the state threshold, they're primarily situated around some of the equipment that we find in our kitchens. So again, when we identify this, first of all, what we do is we take that particular piece of equipment out of operation, and in these cases, they've been steamers. Or if it's another issue which we find that would be a faucet, that faucet is basically taken out of service. And the mitigating factors that we put in place, simply replacing the faucet, and that gives us a cleaner sample the next time it comes out. Or in the case of a steamer in a kitchen, what we do is we put a lead-certified water filtration system in place, and then once we install that on the unit, we draw another sample, and then that has brought down the levels back in other sites as well. So again, we do have two schools to which we're putting some mitigating factors in place right now, but we have been able to remedy each of these as we've gone through it.
Thank you, Dr. Bowers.
Yes, sir.
Also, we will notify the public of those sites that we did
Yes, sir.
...test positive, and make sure the parents are aware as well.
That is correct. There's a letter that we send home to the stakeholders informing them as to what took place, and then it gives them a point of contact should they have any questions.
As we move forward and test the rest of the district, we'll keep the Board and the community up to date. Thank you, Dr. Bowers.
Thank you.
Then lastly, for me, I would just like to welcome the esteemed Principal from Santa Cabarrus High School in his new role, Mr. Dustin Schuh, who is now our new Chief of Staff. We welcome him and look forward to collaborating with him and bringing some of his expertise here to help us continue to improve our school system. So Dustin, welcome, and thank you for being here. That's all, Mr. Walter.
Thank you, Dr. Kapicki. We will move on to our next section, which is Report Section. And 7.01 is NCSBA's Core Training, and we've had a few of our Board Members that attended this December, and I'm going to ask Catherine if you would to kind of give us a summary of what that training was about, and it looks like you all received 12 hours of training credit.
We did. Melanie Freeman, Greg Mills, and myself attended a two-day training last month in Raleigh, and we had an advantage that we all three attended the same session, got to sit at the table, we covered a lot of material, and it was nice that we were able to talk and share and relate it directly back to our position here on the Board. We also got to meet a lot of other Board Members from other counties, which was nice to sit and talk and compare concerns. And as always, I was proud to say I was part of Cabarrus County Schools. And I'd like to say thank you to Lori Fer for taking care of the registration and making everything very easy for us. And I think we all three decided we want to continue educating and learning as much as we can to do what's best for Cabarrus County.
Thank you, Catherine. Anybody else want to add anything? Good. All right. With that, we'll move on to our next item, which is 7.02. We have a construction update with Mr. Brian Cohen. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Dr. Kapicki, it's your January update for the projects we have ongoing. It's a new clicker. So we'll kick off with Coltrane Web Beverly Hills replacement project. So currently, the demolition for all the buildings is completed. They're all down to the ground. When we put this presentation together, we had about 75% of the demolition debris removed from the site. I believe by now, it's just about all gone from the site. We did have an additional area of hazardous material that we had to abate, that we were aware of, that we could not access until demolition efforts began, because it was underneath the slab in a chase, and that has been completed as well. We continue to work with the agreements with the property owners along Franklin Avenue for some public utility easements that we're going to have to acquire as a part of this project. The City of Concord, I will note, did approve the sewer allocation request at their December 17th Council Meeting. The county will also be closing on a small property there at the corner of Yorktown Street, 69 Yorktown, mid-January, that we needed to acquire as a part of this project. The North Carolina Department Environmental Quality Permit has been approved and issued for the site development as well. I will note that the proposed guaranteed maximum price that we'll be presenting later to you tonight, we received, is about $1.2 million less than the preliminary GMP that was presented this past year. And we anticipate in the next two to three weeks that site work and erosion control measures will begin taking place on that site. That's just an updated aerial image there, showing most all of the buildings, with the exception of the 1979 classroom building, down to the ground.
Brian, could you please speak to the Yorktown Street property, please?
Yeah, so in that image, if you can look up towards the right-hand side, you'll see a little blue house. That's a small rental property. It only encompasses about .07 acres, about 3,200 square feet of land. That house actually had the utilities that were attached to it run right through the middle of our property. So we were going to be tasked with relocating the utilities as a part of that house, and the cost for relocation of those utilities exceeded what the value of the house and the property brought. So it was in conjunction with the county and the real estate broker to just make an offer on the house, since it was rental, they were agreeable to sell the house, and that is why we are purchasing that land.
And that was part of the budget as well, correct?
It is, yes, sir. So as a part of the total budget that we laid out with the county, we included land value in that budget, because we knew that this might be a possibility.
And the actual price, if I recall?
So the selling price was $145,000.
Which was under the budget that we had put in the way
Yes, sir.
...budget.
Yes, sir. That image is looking towards Georgia Avenue. On your right would be Franklin. On your left would be Grove. That's kind of the multipurpose area that was formerly for the students at Coltrane And we have some images of the 1979 building coming down. The image on the left does show the live oak tree that we have agreed to preserve as a part of the agreement with the Historic Preservation Committee with the City of Concord. That just gives you another overall aerial image of the total campus and the work taking That's looking back up towards Grove and Spring Street. It's kind of at the vantage of where the new car rider drop-off will be located. And then these are the, just the updated renderings of what the proposed structure will look like. And that's all I have for Coltrane Web. Are there any questions that I can answer? Yes, ma'am?
Okay.
Yes.
Looking at the renderings, where's the old oak tree in those rendering? Where's, what does it look like?
I didn't catch, well, no, you can't. It's on the outside of the bus lot, Ms. Escobar, and it's not visible in either of these two renderings.
Okay.
You can see it there. On the left-hand image, you can see it, but that sits at the corner of the bus lot, so I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I'm glad that we're keeping it. That's nice. Thank you.
We're told it's over 100 years old, and that it'll live for another couple hundred years, is what we're told, so.
Nice. Thank you so much.
In line of the funding questions, the end of last year, is this project currently on schedule?
It is, yes, sir. Anything else? All right. Okay. Real quick update for Mary Frances Wall. So we are completed with our construction documents, and they've been issued to all the bidders. This past Friday, we did hold a pre-bid meeting here at the Ed Center. The balance of construction bids are going to be opened and read publicly on Thursday, January 16th, here at the Ed Center. Currently, we are reviewing the relocation of existing playground structures at the existing facility that will have to be moved alongside with plans to add new structures. The week before, the week right after Christmas, or right before Christmas, we did some test pitting on an area that has a substantial amount of cut on this site, that we anticipate there's going to be some rock. And we do that in order to capture the amount of rock that may be cut and include that within the bid package, so that it doesn't come at us as a surprise after the fact. The county is also approving the agency and lease agreements for this project, and I'll say, along with Coltrane Web and the Opportunity School. Those agreements that are, have to be approved by the Commissioners and by this Board, and we'll bring those approved agreements from the Commissioners to you next at the February meeting for your approval. Those essentially allow us as a school district to act on behalf of the county, since the county owns the properties that we are developing. And then the lease agreements is the dollar value lease for us to use the site for a school, for the term of the lease. And again, this project does remain on track for an August 2026 opening. The image there is just the two former classroom wings of Beverly Hills and the 1995 wing that's going to be redeveloped on the right-hand side. This is looking in the opposite direction, towards the mechanical boiler room, the cafeteria, dining area, and then that's the previous bus exit and parent drop-off exit that you're looking at on Palisade. These are just some images. When we say test pitting, some people don't understand, we're actually taking a large machine out there digging holes, seeing how far down we can get. We really only found one area that was impactful to where we couldn't get below what our proposed grades were going to be. So that was helpful. The difference being that when we go out there and do soil borings, a boring machine won't go through this, and so the boring report came back showing that we were only getting three or four foot in depth. So we elected to spend the time and the money to go out there with a machine and do these efforts, which are beneficial, because we would have probably had to include an exorbitant amount of allowance money within the site package for rock, had we not gone through this operation. And then that just gives you an aerial view of where those test pitting operations took place, which was on that upper parking lot there, directly adjacent to Hill Grove Water And these are some updated renderings as well for what the building will look like. That's the main entrance, where students will be dropped off. And then this is looking back up towards the 1990s portion building, and some playground space there in between the two. Any questions on Mary Frances Wall? Real quick update on Opportunity Schools. So a pre-bid meeting was held on December 11th for this project. Bidding for this project as well will be on January 15th, 2:00 p.m. here at the Ed Center. The city did approve the sewer allocation request for this project as well. Plan review process with Cabarrus County Building Inspections has been completed, and permits are ready to be picked up once the city permit plan review is completed. North Carolina Department Environmental Quality is currently reviewing the site plans for this project as well. They have about a three-week review period. We have gotten comments from the City of Concord that have been addressed, and once the submission deadline is up, we'll make the resubmission that will take care of their requests. And again, this project remains on schedule for an August 26 opening date as well. That's just the current site plan that we have. The two stems that are going to the north are the connections into the current PLC campus, where traffic will come and go from. And then that's an image of the pre-bid meeting that was held at the Performance Learning And that's all I have on the update. Yes, ma'am?
Is there a difference in site preparation for a metal building as opposed to the other buildings that we, because there's a substantial difference in cost? And I was just wondering why we choose to go with a metal building, or we choose to go with the brick?
So, well, so one, the projects themselves are much smaller projects. They don't, you know, they're 20,000 square feet as opposed to 100-plus thousand square feet. So the cost of construction was more feasible, and the geometry of the buildings that we did for both the Mary Frances Wall and the Opportunity School were very simple geometry buildings that allow us to utilize pre-engineered metal buildings. The cost is less to do a pre-engineered metal building, but you're limited on the spans that you can construct those at. And in a large school, you're spanning too far in order to accommodate that type of construction. But on these smaller schools that are single-story, we don't have multiple stories going above it, we're able to utilize this type of construction, and the footprint's smaller as well.
Can we come up with some kind of hybrid? Is there a way to bring down the cost
Yeah.
...of schools, like a hybrid of both of those worlds, you know, type of?
Yeah, we, you know, we went through West Cabarrus High School, and we did all, we did pre-cast, we did load-bearing masonry, we did structural steel. We did three different types of construction methods. And in some regards, that's a good idea, because you can, a lot of times, you can keep different phases of the project going at the same time. But also, you start challenging yourself, because different types of construction carry different fire requirements and separation requirements. So you start changing what you have to do for structural steel, fireproofing, versus what you have to do with load-bearing masonry. So there are challenges when you start mixing those types of construction in one project. It's not to say it can't be done, and sometimes we do consider doing that. You know, we'll elect to not do load-bearing masonry, because it's not cost-effective, because the wall's really tall, and we'll just do structural steel. So we do make, do hybrid models now as we go through these projects.
Any other questions?
Good.
All right. And you post this on the website as well, so the public can see it there.
Yes, sir. We sure will. Thank you.
All right, our next report is 7.03, the Monthly Budget Summary and Board Report by Mr. Philip Penn. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. Let me kind of take you through a couple of things with the monthly budget update. I want to kind of start from the back of the report, if we could, please, just for a second. That's good enough. One of the things we're going to change going forward, just so everybody's aware, when you look at the unencumbered balance, the far-right-hand column, that we realize is currently being calculated off the beginning budget. And that's kind of understating the amount that's left. So we're going to do another evolution of this report to say that it's now going to be calculated off the third column, which is the revised budget, which would be a better indicator of exactly how much of the budget is left. So the best place to see it is on the capital, Fund IV. Right now, we're showing 167% of the budget still left, right? And obviously, that doesn't make any sense, so. And part of that is reflective of the fact, we just had a bunch of capital drop from the county in terms of that budget, but it'll show instead of that 101 million of 126 million instead, which will make a lot more sense as far as the percentage goes. The other thing we're going to change is the column headings. I think just to make it a little more user-friendly for the public, we're probably going to evolve that to say Beginning Budget in the first column, Budget Adjustments, and then Current Budget in the third column. I just think that's a better way to express this going forward, so you can look forward to that in the next report. So I just wanted to, in case anybody had a question around how can we possibly have 167% of a budget still left, that that's why. So we're going to shift that calculation. So anyway, back up to the main part of the memo, just wanted to share with you three different things, a couple of which we've already been tracking for a bit. The SRO grant for the 2420 The SRO grant for the 24-25 year came in at just over a million dollars for us. That was a decline of about $200,000, which is what we received for the 23-24 year. Now, we already knew that our share of the cost of the SROs was going to exceed the value of the grant by about $300,000. That's what we had budgeted. But this now brings the subsidy to about $500,000. And that will add to the strain to the budget as we have to now figure out where that additional $200,000 is going to come from. So unfortunately, we were told that the competitive process for the award of that grant was, was more intense this year. We saw the outcome of that in terms of what the state gave us. Legal expenses, you know, we've talked about this for a couple of months. We're continuing to run close to about $60,000 per month, $309,000 for the first five months of the year. That's going to put us on a pace of about $200,000 more than what we had anticipated in our budget. That'll be another place we need to go find an offset to that in, in our current budget year. I've also talked a few times about the PRC for ADM growth, what the state was going to give us now that we've gone through this funding and arrears model. So that 1.1, almost 1.2 million represents 60% of what the state anticipates giving us in total, based on the first month's ADM. So there is a second piece of this that's going to drop that is based on month-two ADM. And of course, in Cabarrus, as we're growing, month-two ADM was higher than month-one ADM. So I think the implied value of this funding is closer to 1.9 million, once the rest, remainder of that grant drops. That would be just below our estimate of somewhere between 2 and 3 million in total. That's what we anticipated. I think there may be some final upside in, in that final figure, but it, it's hard to predict that because the grant is kind of passed out on a pro-rata basis, based on how all the other districts in North Carolina are growing as well. In other words, it's fixed funding for this grant. They say this legislator set aside $95 million, and that's where the cap is. But I think we're supposed to see by the end of this week what the, what the revised value of the grant's supposed to look like. So by the time we get to the next month, I should be able to give you final figures on that. So one of the kind of things that we do internally within my team is, once we've gotten locked in our December financials, which we have now at this point, that puts us at the halfway of the fiscal year, we're going to pivot into a lot more of the outlooks for the remainder of the fiscal year, where we think the 24-25 year is going to end up. You know, and we're going to start sharing that with you at a board level, starting in the February meeting. So we're going to kind of go department by department, school by school, PRC by PRC, to sort of figure out, okay, where do we think we're going through the end of the year? Forecasting out our expenses, forecasting out our remaining payroll, things of that nature, to say, okay, how close to the original budget are we, or are we not? And we need to take corrective action as a result of that. That work, that forecast work has already started internally within my department, and it actually becomes a pretty important feeder to development of the 25-26 budget. And that's actually kind of a good segue to what went out to the board over the weekend, in terms of sort of a budget process document. And as I kind of outlined in that document, we sort of intend to stick to, or very close to, the process that we had last year, that we had feedback from users that felt it was, it was fairly well-constructed and good use of, efficient use of time. And then the calendar, of course, that flowed along with that. So the, the big steps internally now is schools and departments owe us back their first cut of the budget this coming Wednesday. We're going to start to have meetings with all the school principals and their treasurers, all the departments and their treasurers, over the next few weeks. It's 65 meetings, so it's a fair amount of work to get through all of it, to, to make sure everybody's voice gets heard. But it's a critical part of our process to make sure we understand the particular needs of each school and each department, how those may have evolved from the time the 24-budget was, 24-25 budget was first put together, to what we think we may have for needs for next year. We'll then start putting all that data together to come up with an aggregate view of what's being requested. We'll start having conversations around that internally as a cabinet. Probably around the beginning of March, that's, that's sort of the timeframe that we usually start having those conversations. It does take a while to aggregate everything together. And then things will get very, very busy during the month of March with respect to the budget, right? We'll start developing what our, our ask to the county should look like, based on what's rolled up so far. And then the first major touch point with the board becomes the March 31st work session around the budget. That, that will be the first real deep dive into what's in the budget that we're proposing for the 25-26 year. That follows very closely to the timing of what we did last year as well. That will then dovetail into an April 7th public hearing for the public to comment out and comment on the, on the budget for what they think the priorities should be, leading up to what should be, we hope, an April 14th adoption of the proposed budget by the Board of Education. Very quickly after that, we then need to pivot into delivery of that budget to the county so that Dr. Capicchi and I can go and make our case before the county commissioners for funding into next year. And if all goes according to plan, prior, on or prior to June 16th, is when we should find out with the county what the appropriation is for the 25-26 year. So that's a very, very abbreviated process for what is actually in the calendar. And I will tell you that, you know, there's a lot more detail that sits underneath that. But by and large, we kind of plan on staying toward the same processes what we, what we involved last year. As we did hear very positive feedback from the 200 or so stakeholders that were involved with that process, that the process was a good one.
Questions for Mr. Penn on any of those items? Sam?
First of all, I appreciate the fact that you're looking to tweak and amend and make it more user-friendly. I appreciate that instead. And I, especially like the encumbered percentages, it makes, it makes a lot more sense. The timeline for this new allotment model, was it delayed because of the legislative delays, or is this what we are to expect going forward?
Well, I, I think part of the issue was the hurricane played a part.
Oh, yeah, that's true, too, yeah.
Because schools couldn't turn in their real enrollment for a period of time, and so the whole process got delayed. And, and if you recall, the piece of legislation that actually enacted that part of the budget was the one that was done last. It was House Bill 10 that was done in, so I don't remember the exact date, but it clearly was later. But now that we know that that process exists, it actually makes it in some respects easier for us to go in and say, okay, how many classroom teachers are we going to be allotted now going forward? Dr. Williams and I actually had this conversation today, that since we're doing funding and arrears, I already know what my month-two enrollment looked like for the 24-25 year. That's what the state's going to use for their initial view of, how many classroom teachers are you going to give me, right, for 25-26? And then it becomes a, a question around how much of that specific ADM growth piece becomes relevant for us. That's the piece I can't solve just yet. But we'll work with our demographer internally to say, okay, what do we anticipate the district to continue to grow for into 25-26 versus the current year?
I guess, I just, I've, I've said this before, it's redundant, but I'm just really concerned about moving kids, moving teachers, having to react after the school year begins. And I didn't know if this was normal or because of the delays that, that we've talked about, if this is going to be the way it's going to be going forward. I don't know.
I, I would say last year's process was probably more painful as a result of the fact that the legislation to adopt the budget was so delayed, right? We had to react very quickly in a way that wasn't very pleasant for anybody. To, to their credit, the, the leadership of the HR team got in front of the issue pretty quickly this year to try to minimize as much of that as possible. And, you know, we, we worked very closely with Francis Lane, our demographer, to make sure we sort of understood how we were tracking, how did that look versus the initial anticipated growth that we would have, and moved fairly quickly. That's not to say that there wasn't some disruption. I think there's always going to be as a result of that. But try to minimize that as best as possible.
We had some of that with the old model. I mean, yeah. And then lastly, your meetings with principals and treasurers, who, who attends those meetings?
So that's going to be a, a big cross-section of the finance team. I've asked cabinet members if they're able to, to sit in on that, or if not, one of their designees. And then typically, it'll be the, the school representation. So everybody sort of at the cabinet level should have some member of their team sitting in on those. One of the things we asked, and the reason we asked for that, is we're looking for commonalities of the request, right? What is popping up at all the elementary schools? What's popping up at all the middle schools? Because it actually did help us expose a few things that we were able to purchase at a district level as a result of that at a significantly discounted rate than if each of these schools had bought them individually. But it helps us identify needs.
Right. Well, that's, I guess that's where I was going, is looking at commonalities and, and, yeah. Okay. Thank you very much.
Sam?
Hi, thank you. Thank you for all this and the detail. So I'm, I'm trying to put into English the, the SRO grant. So explain to me, like I'm not you. What, what I'm trying to understand is, is, is the shortfall due to how much connected to the ADM? Or is it also connected to the fact that our SROs have benefits that are more than from before? So I'm just trying to understand what the difference is.
So I, I think a couple of issues, right? There, there was not a statewide increase in the amount of dollars available. You had more schools competing for those dollars than you've had in the past. And you've had higher costs at an SRO level, sort of statewide, right? Because salaries increased, benefits increased, that drives all of that process. So we anticipated that the cost of the SROs internally, that we would have to subsidize about $300,000 of the cost to have our SROs here. But in reality, because of the shortfall in the grant, we're having to subsidize more like $500,000.
And then to follow that up, though, to be clear, we're not saying we want to reduce our SRO force or that, because as of now, every school has at least one SRO.
That will never be a recommendation that comes from this administration.
Perfect. That's what I want to hear.
Go ahead, Sam.
Excuse me, I was just going to say, as a member of the Safety Committee, I think it's a credit to our safety team, they were way ahead of the safety grants statewide. Others are catching up with us now. So we anticipate those being much more competitive than they've been in the past, yeah.
Exactly.
Anybody else? All right, well, don't go anywhere. We're going to move on to our next.
I think we've got the next item, right?
Our next section here, which is items for consent or action at our next, next meeting. These are items we will be voting on next, next week. So we can either add them to consent and, and vote on them as a group, or we can ask that they be on action and we'll vote on them individually next week. So 8.01 is the 2024-25 budget amendment number three.
So budget amendment number three, and I think you've started to get somewhat used to this process and how the, how the cadence sort of works. Everything that's in the attached memo that you see in front of you and is up on the website sort of reflects all the major revisions from a budgetary perspective that we had in the past month. There were changes in four different funds, one, two, three, and four. But, but in reality, only two of those were material, right? A couple of them were just moving expenses between, or moving budgets between expense lines. The two that had material changes were our Public School Fund, an increase of just less than $1.7 million, and you'll see in the memo how that's detailed out. The biggest driver of that really was the new ADM growth PRC that dropped for almost 1.2 million during the past month. And then the other big change was in capital outlay. And, and I had sort of previewed this at the last meeting where I said, we're anticipating that there's another big piece of the capital budget to drop from the county, and that's exactly what happened. You had a net increase of almost $54 million. The biggest pieces, which were the Culture and Web Beverly Hills Replacement Project, the Mary Frances Wall Project, and the Opportunity School Project, all of which were just covered by Mr. Cohen in the, in the construction updates, right? So now the, the funding has now dropped into place for all those different projects as a result of that. In total, that now increases our budget across all the different funding sources to a little bit under $539 million. You'll see the exact figure at the bottom of the page here. And that's what they're asking, we're asking the board to approve as a result of this amendment. And then, then you've probably gotten used to how we do the reporting. Everything else that follows on after that is the formal budget amendment that needs to be signed, and then the, the account-level detail in each of those four funds.
Questions for Mr. Penn on budget amendment number three? Okay, do we want to have this on action or you want it on consent? Consent, consent, okay. We will put that one on consent. Thank you.
Perfect. Thanks so much.
All right, so we'll move on to 8.02, which is policies for first read, and we have Dr. Ward. Welcome. Happy New Year.
Good evening and Happy New Year to all. So tonight, we have a couple of policies up for a first read. Did not receive any questions, so I will proceed with our summary. We're going to be looking at 8305, the Federal Grant Administration. Here, we have some language that was revised to conform to changes with the Uniform Guidance, which establishes standards for financial and program management for the recipient of federal grants. So this talks to us how we, how we manage our federal grants.
Question. Go ahead.
So it looks like our existing policy was more restrictive. And so this struck requests for proposals, requests for proposals and invitations to initiate. Why would we not keep our more restrictive policy even though these federal guidelines are more lenient?
That's a good question. We are looking at, when they revise the language, those pieces are required, so that's what our team chose to go with.
You got anything else?
I don't suppose so. You know, just again, if, if our language was more restrictive, even if the, even if the federal guidelines is that you are allowed to allow, you can allow people who are participating in draft specifications for requests for proposal and invitations to negotiate, now you're allowing them to compete for those same purchases. And our existing policy disallowed them from doing that. So now the new federal guidelines say that they are allowed to do that. It seems like there is an opportunity for conflict there that our existing policy accounted for. And I don't know if from a legal point of view, it would not be better, to instead of taking the PLS update, assuming that it was better, but to look at it against what we already had and decide whether or not we want to accept that update or keep the policy that was in place. Is it, in other words, if our policy is more restrictive, we may not be necessarily out of alignment with the federal guideline, even though the language isn't exactly the same, right?
Right. So that will be up to the board. If you want to go back and have us look at it, we can certainly do that.
If I could share some perspective on that? So yes, decisions that the federal government makes are often in question, right, as, as to why they do certain things. But what I will tell you in this case is, the language that was struck was for an RFP, right, a request for proposal. That is not a formal part of a bidding process typically, right? That's when you go out and you're soliciting for professional services or something that's outside of a formal bid. So in this case, the, the protection of the formal bid still exists, that you can't have somebody craft the specifications of something that's going to become a formal bidding process and then bid on it itself. This is something where it's more of a negotiated process, where you're soliciting on RFP, or you're, you've already gone through a bidding process and now you're trying to negotiate a final, a final decision with that specified vendor. So I, I appreciate the comment that you're making, but I think that was the original intent of, of bringing that language back, is that it, it doesn't restrict anything that touches a formal bidding process, but addresses leaving open the possibility of, of crafting language in an RFP.
So why would, why would people who are going to end up competing for those purchases be involved in the crafting of that language in the first place?
A lot of times, you will use an existing vendor on something that is a highly technical type of RFP or a very complicated RFP to help draft that. That's not uncommon to actually find, particularly when there's professional services involved or where there's some other kind of technical ability that's involved. I, I've seen it before, so it doesn't really surprise me that, that leaves open that possibility. And frankly, a lot of times, your internal staff would not have the ability to create that RFP without that assistance. We, we just don't have that technical ability in-house.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Any other questions on this one? All right.
Okay. Moving on to Policy 9125, participation by minority-owned businesses. We have seen this policy come before, and it is back. It re, it revises the definition of minority businesses to reflect the change to state law definition, which is also required.
I just have another quick question. Do you know if this brings our policy completely in line with the, with the policy manual from the North Carolina School Board Association? Is ours different from theirs, or is it a carbon copy of what they have?
This is a PLS update from North Carolina School Board Association.
Our, our existing policy sometimes integrates those updates into that policy. Do you know how close our policy is to their policy on this particular item, because it keeps coming up?
Yeah, it's going to keep. It's just like our Parents' Bill of Rights. They, they just keep coming up. So they're going to continue to do that.
Right.
Can we send him the draft policy for the PLS?
Well, I can see what this, I can see this policy. I just wonder, I don't know if I have access to the School Board Association's policy manuals.
So whatever they've struck out, that's, that, that's what the former policy was. So, whatever they've struck out, that's what the former policy was, and now they've added in the language.
Okay, I'm not sure I'm asking the question correctly, but we'll take it offline. Thanks.
Sure, no problem. Okay, next policy is 3225, 4312, 7320, Technology Responsible Use. And there were adjustments made to this policy in response to new state law prohibiting the viewing of inappropriate content, i.e. pornography, on government devices and networks. And it also, from a district standpoint, we had our district team look at this, just to make sure that students were not also, you know, taking pictures of one another and being able to post those things online without consent from other people. So, we took the PLS, and we also did some district work around that.
Are we good with that one? Thank you. All right.
All right, 4150, School Assignment Transfers and Program Choice Enrollment. This was a district request to honor our staff members who may have been assigned to different schools and different roles, that they would be able to keep their students in the schools that they started in, so that their employment, their students' enrollment wouldn't be negatively impacted if they were to move to another position. Make sense?
Okay, looks like we're good with that one, next.
Awesome, 2110, Board Member Elections. Updates the policy based on changes in our election process, and we talked a little bit about this last time. And I'll let Mr. Eisenhower take over if he wants to explain a little bit more.
Sure, so these are some clarifications that are Cabarrus County-specific. These are in light of the law change in 2023, which was House Bill 88, which was state law 2023-4, which essentially made Cabarrus County Board of Education partisan elections. So, the main substantive change here is, you'll see that there was a reference to all elections are nonpartisan. We've now changed that to partisan. So, that was the primary change. And like I said, this is all consistent with House Bill 88, which is state law 2023-4. We've also updated the legal references at the end to incorporate the new statutes as well. This obviously went into effect for the 2024 election and will be in effect going forward.
Pam?
Just to clarify, we don't really have a choice. We have to make our policies in line with the law, even if we don't agree with the law.
Correct, yeah, this is just, since the state law changed, now we're adapting our policies to match state law.
Thank you for that, any other comments? All right, next one.
All right, 2115, the Expire Term Fulfillment, which we are now experiencing.
Right, so this is the same thing, this has a little bit more substantive changes. So, as you guys know, because we're going through it right now, for all board members elected 2022 or before, those vacancies will be filled, as we've always done, by the membership of the Board, in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 115(c)(37f). For all board members elected in 2024 or thereafter, the new House Bill 88, state law 2023-4 will apply. And so, in those, if a vacating member was elected as a nominee of a political party, then the remaining board members will consult with the County Executive Committee of that party and shall appoint the person recommended by that party executive committee. And so, the state law says they have 30 days in which to make that recommendation. And that would then mean that the remaining board members have to appoint that person who was recommended by the party executive committee, you would not have discretion. We did add here something that would happen if that party executive committee did not make a recommendation with 30 days, then we would default back into our typical process. I don't anticipate that would be an issue, but we had to have some mechanism to fill a vacancy if there was no recommendation made within those 30 days.
Any questions on that? All right, thank you, we'll move on, next.
The last two are just technical edits where the legal references were updated. It was 6200, Goals of the School Nutrition Program. Legal references were recommended to be updated, and we accepted that recommendation of 6200.
Pam?
And the last one is 64.
Pam's got a question.
Okay.
I'm just looking at Board Docs. We have the summary, but I don't see the 6200 for the public to view. So, I would just ask that be added to action so that we can-
That's a good catch.
-make sure that we just have the specifics. I don't have a problem with it, I just want to make sure we have that.
Okay, well, we'll get those added.
And that's also, sorry, thank you, 6450 also is not listed there. So, there's just those two at the end. Thank you.
Okay. So, these are first reads, so they will not be effective this month. Gives the public an opportunity to review these and suggest their comments. They can send those either via email, or they can come speak to us, either way. But we do want to make the, give the public an opportunity to weigh in before these policies become effective on the second read, which for those will be next month. So, here, I've got 8305, 9125, 3225, 4150, 2110, and 2115 on consent. Is that what we all feel? Is that okay? And then, the other two will be on action for next week.
Sounds good.
And don't go anywhere either, so we got the next item is the Policies for Second Read. So, these are the ones that will be effective once we vote on them next week.
Okay, would you like me to go through them again?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, first, we have Policy 2302, Remote Participation in Board Meetings. We've made some required changes there with state law. We've made some other clarifying changes in language, and we updated legal references.
Okay.
All right. Next one was 3410, Testing and Assessment Program. We updated Section B, which was required, and we also updated legal references, which was recommended.
Okay.
We looked at 3460, which are our graduation requirements. We updated the course unit tables to reflect current state board requirements, and it was recommended that we update legal references.
Okay, I think my question on that was, why is there a local recommendation column when there are no local recommendations? Why is there a local recommendation column when there are no local recommendations? It doesn't really affect the policy in any ways.
Right. Yeah, we got this straight from the PLS, okay. Next one is 6140, Student Wellness. Revises language to conform with changes to the Uniform Guidance, which was also required, and recommended legal references were updated. Good? The next one, the next two, I believe, are technical edits. For 4040, 7310, Staff-Student Relations. Corrects a typo, and it updated legal references. And then, in 4120, domicile or residence requirements, it was required that we update legal references.
Okay, do we have any comments? Are we all good with, we have enough information to vote on these as consent next week? All right, so those will be added to our consent to second reads, so they will, once we vote on our consent agenda, they will become effective.
Thank you.
And thank you again for your time. So, moving on, I've got 8.04, which is Second Chance EOG/EOC Summer Program. And we've got Ms. Sarah Reeves and Mr. Carl Singh, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Board Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, and Dr. Kapicki. We appreciate you allowing us to present today. We are coming here in tandem as academics, as well as accountability, to present our Second Chance EOG/EOC Summer Programming. For those of you that may not be familiar with this program, this is something that we have participated in for several years and something that we're really proud of. As you may know, any type of accountability or assessment measure that happens at end of year is typically just a moment in time or a snapshot of a student's performance and may or may not be indicative of their actual performance that day. So, offering students the opportunity for a second chance, or an opportunity to retest on a standardized test at the end of the year, really is a tremendous benefit to our students.
We have had quite a bit of success for the last few years in this program. We wanted to share essentially our new plan for this year so that it could be approved, so that we could use it this spring. So, the Second Chance retesting is specifically offered to students that were not initially proficient on those assessments. Not proficient is any student that scores below a Level 3. In North Carolina, Level 3 represents proficient, Levels 4 and 5 represent college and career-ready. So, this is only offered to students that scored below a Level 3. Students may only retest in one content area, so if a student scores below proficient in multiple areas, typically, the school leadership and teachers use several data points, our benchmark assessments, for instance, other classroom indicators to determine which assessment that student is most likely to achieve success on. Retesting is offered on the subjects and courses listed on this slide, with the exception of science assessments. So, science and biology in both 5th grade and 8th grade science, and then high school biology are under a renorming year. That means it's the first year that this assessment has been given. The assessment results will not come back in early summer in a timeline that makes sense to be able to retest. So, we will offer students opportunities to retest in math, in reading, in elementary, middle, and high school. Cabarrus County Schools has used this flexibility since 2019. We have typically used ESR funds for this program. We've had quite a bit of success, and this has been very important, both to schools and to the districts. I also referenced in your board report this week that it's also obviously important to students. So, students have an opportunity to improve their grade. This has ramifications for student scheduling, this has ramifications for AIG identification, for advanced coursework opportunities. You can see on this slide some of the outcomes. In 2223, 35.5% of the students that participated were proficient. That speaks to the remediation that occurs, that speaks to the intentionality that our teachers and schools have used in instruction and also in selecting students. This represented an overall increased proficiency of 1.3%. That sounds like a very small number, but we offer hundreds of thousands of assessments, so 1.3% is a pretty significant number. The 2324 impact was that 39% of those students who retested moved to proficiency. Coincidentally, it also increased our overall proficiency 1.3%. That was 1,521 students participated last year and 596 achieved a proficient score. This contributed to six schools improving their school performance grade, and there was at least one school that avoided the low-performing list due to a 2% increase in retesting. So, that one school, I'm sure, was incredibly excited to be able to retest students and really show what those students were capable of.
So, in a manner of continuous improvement, we are consistently looking at how to revise this specific program and offering for our students while also being very fiscally conservative, knowing the fact that ESR funding has dissolved. We have to be very intentional about how to continue this program, but also make sure that we're being good fiscal stewards. So, as you can see here, some of the things for our May proposal, this is something that we take before you specifically to vote on to get approval, because this is something that we have to do in order to submit our plans to the state. The state of North Carolina actually requests that we submit a plan notifying our Board of Education that we'd like to take advantage of this opportunity. Intentionally, we work with our school leaders to recruit our teachers, to make sure, knowing that they only truly have one full day of remediation, we want to really maximize this time to help move the needle on student proficiency, as Mr. Sane shared. Additionally, breakfast and lunch are available and provided for students if they want to take advantage of that during the retest or the remediation during Second Chance programming. As I shared with you, this is very short timeline, so we're really talking about two half-days, one half-day for remediation, and one half-day for retesting. We do provide transportation during that time for families, so that all of our students have access to and make this available should they receive an invitation. And this year, we're specifically looking at the dates of May 22nd and May 23rd during our teacher workdays to help maximize fiscal resources, and then really working with our high schools in alternating dates based on graduation schedules, so that we can really be intentional about the end-of-year timeline.
Any questions on this presentation, Pam?
Thank you. I will just say that I appreciate the improvements, and thank you for showing that overall. And I would just also say, as a parent of students, that these tests are stressful. These schools go through a lot ahead of time, and they try to make it less stressful. And I love that, you know, the high schools come and support and cheer on our elementary schools. There's so many things that are done throughout the year, so that you wouldn't hopefully get to this point, but the reality is, it's hard. It's hard to take a test at the end of the year. And so, having a second chance, it might not seem like a big deal, but I think it demonstrates that that second chance is worth it. And I would also just think, as a student, while it doesn't impact your grades, it's, they're aware of their scores, they know, I mean, my kid knows what her score, her projected is supposed to be, she knows how many questions she needs to get to that point. Like, it's, so anyway, I appreciate it, I think it does, it is, it's both good for us as a school district on our report card, but it's more important to recognize the value for the students. So, thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Anyone else comments? Caleb, would you have anything to share on this? All right, so do we want to add this one to consent, or we want to have this on action? Consent, looks like a strong consent on that one, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we will move on to the next one, which is 8.05, Program Choice Programmatic Review and Recommendation. We have Sarah, who's still here, and Allison, welcome.
Absolutely, well, thank you so much this evening for allowing us the opportunity to present. With me this evening is Ms. Allison Whitaker, she is our Director of Program Choice. And we are here today to share a little bit of updates on programmatic review process, as well as some updates for the Board of Education. So, for those of you that may not be aware, our program choice is specifically outlined in Board Policy in terms of our vision and mission around Policy 4154, specifically with the intentionality of diversifying our student population with concentrated given themes or emphasis within our county. And it is a tremendous source of pride. And so, as a result, we've shared this graphic with you before, but I think it's really important to specifically highlight our intentionality in continuous improvement. So, as we always look at program choice and programmatic theming with the ever-changing landscape of our county, it's incredibly important to go back and look at how these programs are serving our community. Are we seeing interest in those specific programs? And also, what are the results or the return on investment in these programs that we are placing in our schools? And that's why we are here today. I will also share that we have intentionally outlined this in our strategic plan in Destination 2025, so as you can see here in Objective 3, we've talked specifically about programmatic review. And this specifically is within both our program choice, but also within our academies within CTE, so that is included in this process as well. So, in October, I actually came before the Board and shared updates and highlights, as well as launching the Futures Fair, as well as the lottery application window. And at that time, we shared with the public that we would be launching our Program Choice Family Engagement Survey. And this was really designed after realignment to solicit feedback from all of our constituents, both those that have students in Cabarrus County schools, but also maybe family members or future families that might want to access programs in the future. And we'll be sharing, Ms. Whitaker will be sharing a little bit more about those survey results in a moment. From there, as you can see, we have just concluded our application window that ended December 15th prior to the holiday break. And we are right between the end of the window and parent notifications February 3rd, which is why we are coming to you this evening with some recommendations around two programs based on some data sets that we have. As I shared with the community back in October, our programmatic review process is really comprehensive and it's multifaceted. We're not just looking at one specific data set, we're looking at a multitude of pieces of data to really make sure that the programs are aligned to our Board Policy, as well as our vision of what we want program choice to do. So, we're looking specifically at stakeholder feedback surveys, this is both at the individual level, but also at the district level. We're looking at curriculum, resources, and needs. So, is there specific provision curriculums that we need, or we're hearing from our teachers, parents, staff, that we feel like really needs to help to enhance the programs? And then, of course, we're- And then, of course, we're looking at student performance, demographic, application, and enrollment data. And this evening, we're actually specifically coming based on interest in enrollment data as well as a couple of other factors in terms of our recommendations.
So, we'll start our conversation with a few fast facts about the program choice programs that occur right now. So, we have 11,000 students, or about almost 30% of our student population participate in program choice programs. Of those, 25% of the students attend a school outside of their attendance zone. 4,955, or 14% of the students engage in STEM program. That's actually 45% of program choice students. So, as you can see, that's a popular choice. And then finally, 16 program choice programs are housed at 44 of our schools here in Cabarrus County. And with that, I'm going to talk a little bit about the survey data that came back from the survey that was conducted in November. And quite a few themes came about from the 900-plus responses from various responders, mostly parents. 93% of our responders are current parents, and the remainder were community members or parents looking to enroll their child in the coming school year. And so, we wanted to lift up that there is a need for awareness as far as what the programs do offer. So, we've been working on putting a plan in place for better communications in the future. We want to make sure accessibility is a focus in the coming year as far as transportation, communication, and funding where we can access that. We want to make sure that students have access to the appropriate programs as well as always focusing on school and program improvement. And I think we'll go to the next slide. Finally, these are the overall trends of all of the feedback, and quite a bit of feedback, many, many, many Excel spreadsheets we reviewed. Lots of requests for more STEM programming, arts programming, transportation hubs to get from homeschool site to the actual site where the program choice program is, and also more communication to families about the choice options that we have.
So, based on specifically this data, as well as our enrollment data during the lottery window, there were a couple of common themes that came about, and two of which are actually going to be presented today as recommendations due to what we would call programmatic oversaturation. And so, as a result of that, one of the things we want to be really intentional about is being good fiscal stewards and making sure that we can maximize the health and vitality of our programs by filling our seats. For example, it's very difficult to run a language program when you only have 12 students enrolled in that class for a multitude of reasons, but also from a fiscal perspective and an efficiency perspective, we want to make sure that we're maximizing those resources. And so, as a result, this evening, we're coming with two programmatic recommendations, the first of which is a dual-language immersion Mandarin programmatic update. And this specifically was a recommendation that I actually shared about a year and a half ago where we talked about beginning to explore based on early data and trends and patterns that we were seeing in the county about streamlining a K-8 Mandarin pipeline versus having two comprehensive Mandarin programs. And so, as a result, some of the things that we really considered were overall enrollment trends. So, looking both at the enrollment trends at Cox Mill Elementary as well as Harrisburg Elementary, and then also looking at school capacity. And so, that was also outlined in board policy, but we specifically want to be mindful when we're ever time, anytime we're offering a programmatic theming that allows for magnet students to come into a school that may already be at capacity, obviously, that is a concern. Additionally, we have been working with our partner at Participate, but this is not uncommon for a variety of contracted vendors that are currently working to help us seek international staff for these programmatic themes. There are some trends with foreign labor policy, specifically with China, and being able to secure the visas needed for our staff to be able to come over. And so, as we look into the future, we want to be mindful of making sure that we can maintain the staffing for that. Additionally, we're consistently looking at what trends and patterns are we seeing across North Carolina? Is this specific to Cabarrus County that we're seeing a decline in Mandarin interest and staffing challenges, or is this across the board? And very candidly, we're seeing a lot of LEAs transition away from Mandarin or consolidating their Mandarin pipelines for many of the reasons that we just shared above. So, our recommendation for the 2526 school year is actually to phase out kindergarten Mandarin at Cox Mill Elementary School starting in the 2526 school year. So, Harrisburg would retain the Mandarin program, and we will be working very intentionally with the families that applied during the lottery window and being very intentional and mindful about providing the premier customer service to be able to support those families and navigate this transition. Additionally, we really want to take into consideration the capacity at Cox Mill Elementary right now and being able to provide them some relief with this program being able to shift over specifically to Harrisburg Elementary. This is just, I think, you know, letting the data tell the story. I think this is very helpful. When you look back from the 2019, 2020 school year to now, this encompasses the overall total programmatic enrollment of each of the programs at each of the schools. And again, the data has been there for quite some time. We've been monitoring it very closely, and after this window, the data continues to support the potential of transitioning over and being able to consolidate that program without a heavy burden on one school and being able to continue to run the programmatic theme. Our next recommendation is specifically for our Spanish programmatic update at Rocky River Elementary School. And so, again, the same things that we're looking at, specifically monitoring enrollment trends, school capacity, and community interest. The other thing that we really monitored very closely is with realignment. There is a neighboring school, Wolf Meadow Elementary, that offers dual-language Spanish as well that is very close in proximity. And so, during realignment, many of the students that were taking advantage of this programmatic opportunity actually were rebounderied to Wolf Meadow and were able to continue that programmatic theme. However, with that being said, it did not leave a lot of students left at Rocky River Elementary that were interested in the program. We've been looking and monitoring this very closely over the last couple of years. However, with the data trends, the recommendation we believe is best suited for this school is transitioning out kindergarten next year for the 2526 school year, supporting the staff and allowing those students that want to take advantage of that opportunity to attend Wolf Meadow Elementary School in the dual-language Spanish program. This map specifically, I think, is just helpful to show our top priorities and be able to provide access both in population density, but also in geographic areas of the county to show the feeder opportunities that would be made available specifically for dual-language Spanish. So, transitioning from our current model to four DLI elementary schools across the county, all of those schools would feed into Roberta Road Middle School, which would offer the dual-language programming all the way through 8th grade.
Questions? Start on the segment. Pam?
So, thank you for sharing this information. I will just say, you know, I have a student that went through the Cox Mill Elementary Mandarin program, and so I can speak to anyone about the value of Mandarin if you're questioning that. And so, I'm not going to say this is easy to hear, but what I'm thinking about and what is important to remember is that we are not getting rid of Mandarin. Even though other school districts are moving away from Mandarin, we are still providing Mandarin. So, if there is a desire to take Mandarin, or same thing with Spanish at Rocky River, you can still have that opportunity. And also, I appreciate the fact that this is a gradual transition, and so if you have made the commitment to finish at a school in Mandarin or in Spanish, that you will still have that opportunity. You can't do everything that you want. And so, I think that it's important to look at the entire school district. I appreciate you taking the time to look at all those spreadsheets. I would just ask, I guess my follow-up question besides my commentary, is what has been the reaction or the communication with these families to this point?
I mean, right now, the parent notification was shared yesterday evening with our families. We have not heard that there was any, you know, cause for concern. I will say, we had conversations with both of those school leaders, and I think that for many of the community members, they knew that the programs obviously were not the same programs that they were several years ago, and that these were things that we were looking at in terms of the programmatic review process.
And roughly, how many potential kindergarteners are affected?
So, we are looking at a total of 20 kindergarten students across two of our schools, these two schools that are impacted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Greg?
My question was about the parent notification that went out last night.
Answer? Anyone else? Melanie?
How, where, and we might have asked this question the other day, and you may not have the data on it, but as long as STEM schools have been, and we see that parents want more STEM schools, what is the impact that it has made on literacy and math scores in those schools? Does the data support the actual STEM program? Or is there, and do we have more STEM programs in elementary than we have in middle school and high school?
It's a great question. To answer the first part of your question, I will say, there's no silver bullet. Putting a program somewhere is not going to fix student achievement. However, when you think about a return on investment, depending on the multitude of things that you may be looking at, there's certainly some solid evidence to be able to support many of the programs, and we'll be happy to come back and present any of that information. Additionally, I will say, it's not uncommon to see more programmatic theming at elementary schools because obviously you're serving a smaller population of students that then feeds into a middle school. And then, of course, you see the most limited number at high school because you're consolidating at that point. But I will say, across the board, that was a common theme that came up in the stakeholder survey that our families would like to continue to see more of our schools offer STEM programming.
Can we get the data for the progress?
For literacy progress attached?
Well, and even you had mentioned in our meeting that, and maybe people don't understand this, that an immersion school spends 80% in the other language and only 20% in their own language. So, I would like to see how that has affected literacy rates and things too across the board.
Sure. So, student achievement results in our dual-language schools?
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks, ma'am.
You done, Melanie?
Yeah.
Pam?
I will just say, anecdotally, from one of the reasons that immersion, I can't speak to STEM, but I can speak to Spanish and Mandarin, and part of the cell of why you would want to be in that program is that it's like their brain is on fire, and they literally are taking in more than the average person is on a regular basis. And so, it's like you can't, you've opened up parts of their brain that would not be open otherwise. And so, and the test results, I can say, because it is a huge concern in 3rd grade because we're like, oh, my gosh, these kids, my kid can speak in another language and write in another language, but it's not regular letters. And can she spell? And, but honestly, I can tell you Cox Mill, I can't speak for Harrisburg Elementary, but the Mandarin kids at Cox Mill Elementary have the highest reading scores in the entire school. So, for English, not for Mandarin, but so it is, it'll, again, I just say, my kid's brain's on fire and it's working. And so, that's why I would encourage anyone to look at another language. And for our second language kids that move into our district, the fact that they're learning English, the same thing, their brains are on fire, and we're benefiting from that, and they're growing.
So, Ms. Freeman, I've asked Dr. Parker to come up and speak to this. She's put a lot of time into this, especially 80/20 quotient and ratio. She can speak a little bit to this. It's something that we are actually continuing to research and look into to try and improve those programs, but she can speak a little more specifically to your questions. Dr. Parker?
I'll try to give some good analogies that maybe will help. Hey, everybody, I'm Johanna Parker. I serve as the Assistant Suit for Elementary School, and I support all the elementary principals. One of my big areas of research is in immersion. In my former life, I did it a whole, whole lot and get to work with these wonderful people with immersion. One of the ways I would encourage, and I know as we were up here just talking, we can easily track cohorts of students over time and their progress. It takes five to seven years for a child to become fully biliterate and bilingual. So, when we think about kiddos in our immersion programs, think about the amount of vocabulary that everybody hears in a day. So, if we think about that in like K-2, it's like a giant pot, right? You're throwing all these words in, all these words, then they're hearing it in two languages. So, they're hearing double the amount of academic vocabulary as we all are speaking in English. If I switch to Spanish or Mandarin right now, then we would all be getting more vocabulary, right? So, they sort it all in, and then as they hit 2nd and 3rd grade, they start to sort it out. They start to sort it out. It's kind of like how you can read a book and then also watch a Netflix show. Now, it's probably kind of a silly analogy, but you can remember what you were watching in Netflix, but then switch to your book and be reading. It's very, very similar when we're switching languages. It can be hard for monolingual friends like myself to understand that, but it's really a switch, but they're getting double the amount of vocabulary. So, the brain on fire that Ms. Esquire was talking about is, it is a real thing, and it really, really happens, especially in 2nd and 3rd grade. They do all sorts of silly stuff. My kiddo is in a Spanish immersion program in 1st grade, and she mixes up vowel sounds. They do all this wild stuff in the beginning, but it's amazing because you're seeing into their mind. And then what happens is as they move through in 4th and 5th grade, they have gotten double that academic vocabulary that's then they've sorted. So, then we see this spike where their proficiency is significantly higher than it would have been if they were in a traditional program. And that works both ways. So, our kiddos whose home language is Mandarin, they wouldn't normally get to come to the U.S. and learn academic language in Mandarin. Same in Spanish. They wouldn't normally get to come to the U.S. and learn academic language in Spanish. And when they had that opportunity, our kiddos, our ESL students, our ML students whose first language is Spanish, when they learn that academic language also, it contributes to them having higher reading levels in middle school, which is, of course, what we want for all kids. So, the big picture, we can definitely look at cohorts over time, but there's massive amounts of national studies. North Carolina is actually, has the second-most immersion programs in the country, right after Utah. So, we, yeah, we have had immersion for over 30 years. It's a wonderful, wonderful program. But tracking cohorts over time is probably the data I think you'd probably want to see, which we could work on.
I agree with any foreign language, and that's why learning another language definitely makes connections on both sides of the brain, that kind of thing. But that's also why they are asking for the arts, which also does the same thing. And it's, your analogy of firing the brain, it is that you have to have all learning based on another foundation. They make the connection and cross over, and I understand that. So, I would like to see more, you know, people know they voted for me, that I want music, I want more arts in our schools to help with this process too. So, thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody on this side? Dias, want to add anything? I think my only question was, are we, when you only have six kids in a class, are you combining grade levels to?
Absolutely, yes. So, in this case, you know, when we're getting to limited numbers in the upper grades, we're working with the principals. We specifically work with human resources and talk about what's the best opportunity for those students, but more than likely, you're going to see a grade-level combination classes.
So, one teacher instead of having two teachers?
Yes.
Are we good enough with the information to put this one on consent? Or do you want to see it on action? Consent? Consent?
I didn't think we made a choice on this.
No.
It's on our, it's on our. You do. The board does have to weigh in on this. It's a curriculum issue. It's a programmatic change. The board has to vote on it.
It's not a big change, but it's.
Keeping it back in mind too for our incoming board members, this is the program choice development, progress, I don't want to say problem, but we've been examining this for the last two years, and we'll be putting more out in front of the board in the next couple of months too, including the annual program choice plan that gives you everything from A to Z that Mrs. Reeves and her department will develop, so we'll give you more of a comprehensive look at program choice across the board. So, we're not trying to piecemeal this to you. It's just that there are so many different tentacles and so many things involved, and when Sarah did her presentation, you think about the transportation, the communication, and some of the wants and needs of our district in terms of arts, which I do agree with Mrs. Freeman, and I think we, any chance we get to put more arts into our schools is. And I think we, any chance we get to put more arts into our schools is great. In our STEM program, obviously about 50% of our kids are participating in that. But we want to make sure that the dad is driving the bus as we make some of these decisions. So we will continue to keep the board updated on that as well. So thank you for your time.
And we'll add it to a future meeting agenda.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, so I hear consent. So we're going to add that one to the consent agenda. And I appreciate the time spent on this and it gives us enough time to notify the families that are impacted. All right, so moving on to 8.06, and we've got Mr. Brian Cohen back. He's going to talk to us about the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment for the balance of the construction at the Coltrane Webb Beverly Hills.
Yes, good evening again. The Cabarrus County Schools Department of Construction, in collaboration with our construction manager at Risk Rogers Builders, held the bid openings for the remaining balance of construction bid packages on Tuesday, December the 14th, and the advertised rebid on Thursday, December the 12th. All these bids were publicly open and read aloud to those that were in attendance. A total of 130 bids were received across the 31 packages during this phase of the project. Previously, the approved GMP1 and GMP2 by this board for four bid packages, which together received 20 bids. This brings the overall total for the project to 150 bids spanning the 35 different bid packages, which is an average of just over 4.2 bids per package. So tonight, we are requesting your approval of the A133 amendment for the balance of construction for the Coltrane Webb Beverly Hills STEM Replacement School Project in the amount of $30,625,363. To summarize, this amendment added to the two previous amendments approved by this board in October and December, brings the total guaranteed maximum price for this project to $43,076,759. This amount covers all site development and building construction costs for this project. The total project GMP does remain within the approved funds allocated by Cabarrus County and the local government commission. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions for Mr. Cohen on this one? Pam?
Thank you. I just want to clarify for the public because we make votes, but we don't get to, we have to get the money from other people. So just clarify that again, that last sentence, where did we get this money from originally? And who okayed it? And then now we're saying, I feel like we're like rubber stamping a process that has, slightly is out of our control.
Yes, it is very much out of our control. We can make the request to Cabarrus County for these funds. And they have to, as a leadership body, make the decision to approve that request and then take the next steps to make the ask for the authorities that approve the funding itself, which is the local government commission.
And again, so this number, this final number here, 43 million, that falls under those other, we've gotten the okay?
Yes, ma'am.
From those other entities? Okay.
About 1.2 million and added some below that approved amount, which is what we told them it would be.
Thank you for that.
Are there still furniture purchases and other things that would be?
Yes, this is, again, this does not represent the total project budget. This is just for site development and for the building construction.
Can you review these bid packages? So these companies that have bid, we have relationships with them?
We have some similar subcontractors that were part of the R. Brown project and we have some new ones. You know, I think competition is still gaining momentum in the industry. Just one for the time of year when it's starting, plus I think there's just, there's more interest in this public work now.
So it's better than it was?
It is. We received more bids on this bid package than we did for the R. Brown.
Okay, thank you for that. On this side. Oh, go ahead, Melanie?
Is this the, you know, we have the guaranteed maximum, but is, are we going to receive anything else for like furniture or furnishings? So we're not really looking at the guaranteed maximum. We're still going to get more?
So contractually, this is the guaranteed maximum price for the construction and the development of the school itself. There are additional accounts that we use to fund for the furniture, for the equipment, for the technology, for school startup. There are different accounts that we utilize that are outside of this guaranteed maximum price. This is the guaranteed price that if we build this school like it's designed per those plans, it will not exceed that amount.
Does the other furnishings, does that go to the county to be approved also? Or you're saying we have funds for this?
I'm sorry, no ma'am. So that, the total project budget was approved by the commission, the LGC, and the commissioners for this project. So we are approved at $50,463,000. I don't have that exact number. That's what the total approval is. But what I'm asking for your approval tonight is just for the construction and the site development for the project.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Greg?
So can you talk to me for a little bit about what is value engineering? I see it in the document and it's to be determined.
Right.
And so I know this is a guaranteed maximum price. It seems like value engineering may be something that would bring that price further down. And what part of that process does it happen?
That is the intent of value engineering. This project's unique in that it's a prototype of a previous school that we went through and value engineered close to $5 million out of the project previously. So we incorporated a lot of those changes already into this project. Why we don't have anything shown currently for value engineering is because as we go through the process with the contractors and we begin developing these scopes of work and we look at means and methods, they may come to us and say, hey, we can do this, or this is a little bit different than it was previously and we can save you X amount of dollars. And so that's what we mean when we say terms of value engineering. We'll continually go through that process, I mean, really up to the end of the project. We'll continue to look for areas of savings.
Okay. Was that something that would typically have come in this part of the project? Is that something that would normally?
Historically, yes. Historically, you would see after you bid the job and we'll see where the numbers are, we would go through a value engineering exercise with our construction manager to say, hey, we can do this, this, and this, and it's going to save us $700,000. Again, because this is a prototype of what we just recently built, those values weren't there because we've already incorporated them into the project.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, well, this again can be on a consent if we have enough information, or we can add it to action. It's a pleasure, the board here. Consent, consents? Consent? All right, that'll be on the consent and don't go anywhere because you're on the next one too. This is 8.07. This is the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment for the Mary Frances Wall. Pre-engineered metal building.
Yes, so we received the pre-engineered metal building package proposal for GMP3 of the Mary Frances Wall Pre-K Center Replacement School Project from GW Lyles Construction Company, our construction manager at Risk firm. The lead time for the metal building package requires that the order be placed this month in order to meet the proposed project schedule and delivery and installation. This is also going to allow the metal building manufacturer to begin with shop drawings, anchor bolt drawings, and provide the necessary reaction drawings that will need to be provided to the structural engineer in order to complete the footing and foundation design. We are asking for approval of the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment in the amount of $534,853.97, as presented by GW Lyles Construction Company. Again, this, the amount of this amendment is within the approved funds by Cabarrus County.
Board members, we have comments, questions on this one. Greg?
Yeah, just a quick question about the pre-engineered metal building packages. These buildings, the 1995 building is classrooms as being reconfigured into offices, right?
It'll be, it'll be, no, it'll be classrooms and there will be offices on the lower level.
Okay. And then, so this pre-engineered building, is it purpose-built to be a pre-K? Or is this a building that if we need to repurpose it for something else in the future, we would be able to gut that structure and put something else in the middle of it?
Yeah, it is literally, the framework of a pre-engineered metal building is the structure. So if you wanted to go in and blow it all out and redo it completely inside, you would have the ability to do that. The footprint of that building is going to stay as it is. But internally, you don't have any load-bearing walls inside because you're only spanning 70 feet versus, you know, 120 feet. So you have no interior load-bearing structures.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we've got the same decision here. Do we want to add this to our consent agenda? We've got enough information to make the decision and vote on it with the rest of the items? Or do we want to have this as an action? Consent, consent, consent? All right, moving on. That'll be also on the consent. Thank you for your time, Brad.
Thank you.
So the next one is 8.08. This is Cox Mill Elementary School Flooring Replacement. And we've got Mr. Chuck Taylor. Welcome.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Kapicki. I'm happy tonight to come before you to ask you for your consideration and approval for the Cox Mill Elementary School Flooring Replacement. I know that probably sounds a little boring, but I'm going to get you excited about it. When we do this, there's a lot of educators in here, a lot of principals. Just imagine a school that in the summertime can utilize all their custodial staff for things other than waxing floors. Once we do this, there won't be any more waxing at these two schools. It's basically damp mopping. It's a great material. It actually has a little higher sound coefficient, which means that it's going to be a little bit quieter. It's not going to be a huge difference, but it is a difference. So your hallway is going to get a little bit quieter and I can't imagine a principal anywhere that wouldn't appreciate that. So along with that, over the last three years, we've spent approximately $200,000 a year on floor wax and materials. That does not include the man-hours for waxing these floors and redoing them. Anything that we can do, I've told this board many times, many people on this board over the last 11 years. We have three things we work with. We've got time, people, and money. The only way to truly increase and gain control over our resources is by increasing our efficiency. This is one of those methods. So with that, do I have any questions?
Board members, Pam?
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm not excited, but I appreciate the information.
I'm disappointed.
Can you, you said two schools? This is just for Cox Mill Elementary?
This request is for Cox Mill. The next request, I'm on the next agenda item for letting you.
But it would be for both of them? The benefits are the same for both?
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else on this side? On this side? Okay, so my question is, this does not include the classroom. So is that something you're going to come back and ask for classroom as well? When do we expect to get that?
That will be prioritized during our yearly budgets. We actually have another flooring project that was funded last year. We'll be bringing to you next month. But every year, we try to bring some of these in and do some replacements. And then, of course, as needed, we sometimes replace individual classrooms and areas, depending on condition.
And then can you explain state contract versus bidding for the project?
Yes, sir. State contract is, in effect, a purchasing process that is allowed through state statute. And it is similar to bidding because they have come up with a price that these contractors have to meet.
Okay.
Does that answer your question, sir?
That's what I was looking for again, because we just talked about bidding in the previous one. I don't have any other questions. Is there any else? Again, same decision. Do we want to add this to consent or do we want to have this on the next? Okay, so we have a request for action and we'll move on to the next one. Don't go anywhere either. This is the Weddington Hills Elementary School Flooring Project. That's 8.09.
And it's basically the same thing. Need to get excited on this one. We're asking for your consideration and approval to move forward with this project. Both of these projects were requested in the last budget cycle. They were approved by the board. They were funded by the commission. This is the funding or the bidding. Okay. This is the procurement method that we moved forward with and feel very comfortable with. We've used it in the past at lower dollar amounts and it's worked well for us.
So when does the work get done on this? When does the work get done on these schools?
It will be sometime in the spring.
During the school year?
Yeah.
So how do we not affect the students at the school?
It'll be during times like spring break and then it'll also be over the summertime.
Okay, thank you for that. Questions? Pam?
So we still sweep the floor, we still mop the floor, but we just won't wax it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, same thing. Consent or action? Another action? Okay, so that'll be an action as well for next week. And that's all we had. Thank you so much for that.
All right, thank you.
All right, so we're going to move on to our next item, which is finalist nominations for the board vacancy. And again, the process, I guess, is on board docs if somebody wants to bring that up. But we've been working through the process to fill our open board seats. We've had eight folks that had submitted their resumes and cover letters to us. We've had the last two weeks to review that. As of this afternoon, however, I've had two individuals who have withdrawn their names. So Brian Floyd and Cindy Furtinbaugh have asked that we withdraw them from consideration. So that leaves us with six names. So our intent here during this process was to open up nominations for finalists. And a finalist would be somebody who would come and present to us next week. They have three minutes to present, essentially what they'd like to position, what they could bring to the position. And then we'd have a public comment period where the public can come and weigh in as well on those finalists. And then after that period, we would vote on the finalists. So this process here is to reduce that number from the six to a lesser amount, respecting the time of our applicants. And the list of applicants was also attached to the board agenda. So with that, I guess I will open it. We have a question or are you?
Oh, no.
We're going to open this up for nomination. And again, if somebody's nominated a name, you don't have to re-nominate the name one time. It's fine. We're just going to ask that person to come and present to us next week. So we are opening it up for nominations and I have Pam's going to be the first person.
Yeah, so thank you. I just wanted to talk about, a little bit about the process and why I've gotten to the point where I am today. And I really appreciate the comments that our chair made at the beginning because it's Board Appreciation Month and also our superintendent talking about the role of a school board member. And, you know, Rob said, you know, we're the community voice link between us and the community and the classroom. And the superintendent shared that every voice matters and we're student-focused. And as a board, we're focused on what's best for students. And so, again, this is a nonpartisan seat. I know who we're replacing. And I want to talk a little bit about what Laura brought to the board besides party, because I think that that's important. And so Laura was, or is, still is, she's still a mom. She, and she lived in Harrisburg. So I think that's important because when you're in the community, when we're out in the community, myself included, I can speak, I don't live in Harrisburg, but I am a mom and I live over in the Cox Mill area. And, you know, at school drop-off, at sports, at, you know, performances, you're bumping into parents, teachers, PTO, like you can't help but be stopped at the supermarket. People want to talk about schools. They want to talk about their kids. And so that experience, as a parent, I think is really important to this work. I mean, you heard me tonight. I can't help but think about my kids when I'm making these decisions. But also, it's important that we're thinking about all kids. I can't just think about my kids. And so we're lucky in this, by the applicant pool that you mentioned. We had a lot of qualified people come. So we're not sitting here saying who's not qualified. I think almost every single person that present, has qualifications that could put them here. But again, I'm thinking about what are we missing by this vacancy? And that's what I'm looking to fill. So I am going to nominate Michelle Williams and it's because Michelle is, I've had the opportunity to get to know her and I think almost everyone on the board has also gotten to know her because she can't paint. has also gotten to know her because she campaigned for this role. And so I think she understands very well what's in front of her, and she is uberly qualified. But in addition to that, she is a mom who lives in Harrisburg. So I think that that's really, really important to me because I'm not on that side of a town all the time. We get to visit the schools, we get to talk to different people over there, and obviously it's our job to represent the entire county. But I want... I think that's really, really important. And one other thing that I know about Michelle, because we don't necessarily travel in the same circles, but when she was looking to do this job, she... We talked about it, and I had told her about the Institute of Political Leadership. I O P L is an organization that is nonpartisan, that's based out of Raleigh, that is... Their mission is to educate candidates not just to campaign, but to govern, right? So I keep on thinking about the song from Hamilton where George Washington says, "Winning is easy, governing is harder." And governing is hard, and it is different than campaigning, although I think it's important that you've campaigned because it demonstrates your desire for this position. But now that we're here, you understand, we got to work together. You got to collaborate. And I can tell you that because I finished that program, I have friends from all over the state. Some are now in the General Assembly. They are not... We're not of the same party, and yet those relationships have benefited me, I think, in the work that I have done. So again, I just... If you're looking for someone who cares about kids, who has made that her mission, I don't... I... I'm not saying that the other candidates aren't qualified. I just think... Think about what's missing with this open chair. If you are selecting someone who is your friend, who you see all the time, I would argue they're not adding any more to this board. I'm looking for another view, another perspective. And the one thing I'll go back to, too, is our strategic plan talks about having a district that our staff reflects... This is one of our goals, the demographics of our community. And if you look at our board right now, we do not reflect our community. And why wouldn't we try to do a better job on that? So Michelle Williams is a wonderful person, and I wholeheartedly endorse her and nominate her for this.
Thank you, Pam. So we're going to hear from Michelle next week. She'll get an opportunity to speak to us. Anyone else?
I'd like to nominate Robert Kirk.
All right. Anybody else of the... Catherine?
I'd just like to say again, too, that we did have eight very well-qualified applicants. And I did spend a lot of time reading every resume, probably two or three times. I know most of these applicants personally, which made it even harder. It's a very difficult decision. I also appreciate all the emails that we received from the community because community input is important to me, and I did read all of the emails that we received. But I'm going to nominate Shannon Payne Lancaster. And the reason is, I've known Shannon probably her entire life. We both went to Odell together. We both are Northwest graduates. We both have taught in Cabarrus County schools. She's even been an administrator in our school system. So I know her character, and character's important to me. I also know, more importantly, her passion for children, and I know her love for Cabarrus County and her love for Cabarrus County schools. So I'm going to endorse Shannon Payne Lancaster.
Thank you, Catherine. She'll have an opportunity as well, as long as Robert, to speak to us next week. Do we have any other ones? Sam?
It's my understa... I would beg to quibble with the word nominate because it's my understanding that we can bring multiple names up. That's a quibble, but a Roberts rules quibble.
You can bring the multiple names up if you'd like to.
Yeah, I just think we're down to six candidates. That's eighteen minutes. I don't know why we would limit them, so I would like to hear from all of them.
Okay, did you have that right, Sue?
So I would like...
We want to respect the time of people that may or may not have an opportunity.
Sure. If we had twenty candidates, I certainly feel the need to narrow it down, but I think we're down to six. I don't... And they obviously are passionate about this position, or they wouldn't have applied, so I'd like to hear from all six of them.
So in that case, you're asking for Deborah Allen, Jack Lambert, and Patrick Hartzell?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, at least we don't have a huge agenda for next week, so that's probably So we will make those notifications and send the official notice out to those folks tomorrow, and they'll have time to prepare a three-minute presentation for us. Our next item actually... Actually, should we move to close those nominations? We've already picked everybody, so is that necessary?
Yeah, we can make a motion to close the nominations.
All right, so I need a motion to close nominations?
So move.
All right, thank you. Sam, anybody with a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, nomination period is closed. Again, we'll make those notifications officially tomorrow to those folks, and we'll look forward to hearing from them next week. And we have a big job to do to fill that seat with the best person. So our next item was to adjust our meeting calendar, and that was for next week, actually, if I can find it on my agenda. So the previous board had thought... I guess, I'm not sure. I don't have the exact reason, but it appears to be that the Martin Luther King Day would have fallen on that Monday, which had been the thirteenth. But it doesn't fall on that Monday, it falls on the twentieth, right? So we typically have our business meetings the second Monday of the month, and to continue with that process and making sure that we meet our legal and board policy requirements, it would make sense to change it back to the Monday instead of a Tuesday, which is most people are familiar with, the Monday. So that's kind of the background. Questions open up for discussion for anybody? And if not, then we would just need a motion on second to make that change.
I motion to make the change in the calendar to move from Tuesday to Monday.
A second?
I second it.
Second by Catherine? All right, go ahead and vote. If you're all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? So that's unanimous to move that, and we do have to make that notification tonight to make sure that we got the seven days.
I have one minute before you close.
I'm not closing yet. We're... Okay, so we will need another motion to go and close such... But before that, Superintendent wants to point a privilege, so go ahead.
Just real quick, I want to point out to the board members at the dais, and the public will be aware of this, too, because you'll see this, there's probably some out there, and you'll see it scattered throughout the district. But Phil Furr and his team have put together a quarterly magazine that we call Engage Cabarrus County Schools for everyone to kind of take a look at. I would encourage you to take a look at this because what it does, it highlights a lot of the great things that are going on in our school system, talks about our students, our teachers, our faculty. There's just a lot of great information out here, and again, it highlights and it promotes all the wonderful things that are taking place here in Cabarrus County schools. I know the administrators are probably tired of me saying this, but we need to tell our narrative and tell our story about all the great things that are going on here. We have wonderful teachers, we have great administrators, we very supportive school board, a great community. We should be celebrating the wonderful things that are taking place here, and I commend Phil Furr and his department for putting this quarterly magazine together because it really does a great job of doing just that. And I look forward to some of the things that are going to come out of Phil's office in the future, highlighting some of the extraordinary achievements of current students and also alumni. We've reached out to some alumni, the next issue, I don't want to tip our hand, but we have some pretty interesting stories about some of our alumni, some of the incredible things they're doing across the country. So you live in a very special county, as you know, and this is a very special school system doing extraordinary things, and I appreciate everybody's collaborative efforts and especially Phil's efforts in putting this together. So thank you, Mr. Walter.
Do we have copies for the audience members here?
We do. Phil's got plenty of copies. I know there's some scattered out there tonight, and it's also... It will also be on our website, but again, we want to make sure we put the hand copy in the availability to the public as well, so thank you.
Okay, you sparked something. Next week, I'd like to discuss or get into more detail on our board committees. Been working through that. I've gotten all your responses for that. Dr. Kupicki's going to give us a summary of each of the committees and what they do, so that'll happen, and we'll have a discussion about that next week as well. I'd like to add that to the agenda items. So did you have something about scholarships you were talking about the other day? All right, so I guess with that, we've got a need to go back into our closed session. We did start our meeting with a closed session for thirty minutes. It lasted... We had to go back into that, so I will read a motion that we'll need to go back into closed session. So I'll need a motion that the board convenes in closed session to consult with attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to general statute one four three three one eight dot eleven A three, including the cases involving Hunter Hoskins, Quinionnis, Catherine Gillidge, and A.O. to consider confidential personal matters pursuant to general statute one four three three one eight eleven A six. So I... We'll need somebody to move.
Second.
All right, thank you. Pam made the motion, Greg made the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anybody opposed? Say no? Okay, so we're going to take ten minutes recess, and we'll meet back where we met before.